Are you in the meeting?
No.
It's okay.
You have no consent agenda either?
Uh-uh, both at the same time.
Okay, we will call our August 24, 2020 Board of Trustees meeting to order at this time now. We ask that you please pause for a moment of silence. At this time now, entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda items.
Mr. Chair, can we confirm that there are no consent agenda items today?
Okay.
I want to make sure that's the way I read the agenda. I want to just make sure before I make the motion.
There is none.
Okay, so move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Probably moving second for the adoption of the agenda. Ms. Coats, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 Okay.
We're going to do voice voting today.
Can we make a voice, please?
Unless there is one that's popped up. Julie, are we ready for that? We are.
I mean, you can either do a deep debate or just talk for a minute. I can do, y'all can do it on board on the other side.
Okay, I'll tell you what. Since we have Ms. Joyce Green and Ms. Priscilla Jeffries and Mr. Holland shed on Zoom, we will do electronic voting here in person and then I will call those individuals' names, see how they cast their vote. Okay? Is that good? All right, Ms. Green, how do you vote? Ms. Green? Okay, Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Mr. Holland shed?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Darby?
Yes.
Okay. Entertaining motion for the approval of the minutes.
The move. Second.
Move by Mr. Garrett, second by Mr. Frazier. Those that are present, we ask that you please cast your vote. Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Mr. Holland shed?
Yes.
Julie? You have it, Julie. All right, we're entertaining motion to go into executive session.
Seven.
Second.
We're now in executive session. Those that are not a part of executive session, we ask that you please exit the room and we will let you know when you can return.
I'm putting Zoom on a breakout right now.
No. What? Where are you looking at this?
Staff, I would hope this Zoom continues for.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene back into open session. At this time now, entertaining motion for item four A.
I move to allow them to stay while paying tuition for this year.
Second.
Probably moving second for.
Could you restate the motion, please?
To allow the child to stay in for the balance of this year and pay tuition.
And pay tuition. Thank you.
Our move by Mr. Garrett, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Ms. Coates, how do you vote?
Are we voting? I thought we were voting this one.
Got it. Thank you for the reminder. So those that are in person, we will be voting electronically. Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Holland, shed?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Okay, has everyone cast their vote? Thank you, Ms. Coates. That motion passes. Item four B.
I move to approve the four students remaining enrolled at the school and pay tuition.
Second.
For this school, for the current school year.
Okay, moved by Ms. Darby, second by Reverend Collins. Those that are in person, please cast your vote. Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Holland, shed?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
I just got something that allowed me to vote on online. Are we moving up?
Moving up.
We are.
Well, all right.
Just don't dance. Okay. Or C?
Move to approve.
Home. Second.
Move by Reverend Collins, second by Ms. Coates. Are there any questions? That are in person, may I ask that you please cast your vote. Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Holland, shed, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item four D.
I move that we overturn and place number two and number three, and that we overturn number four for the C.E. Williams North Campus, which is the sixth grade academy.
Okay, moved by Ms. Darby and second.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Back up. Never mind.
We can do that, and I'll make sure she reports my vote appropriately.
It doesn't matter. We can do them. Sorry, I was supposed to do them separately. I haven't had enough caffeine today.
Okay, moved by Ms. Darby, second by Reverend Collins. Are there any questions?
Number one, rule number one.
Yeah, all right, let's start. Go back. Number one, let's go back. I rescind my motion, and I'm gonna do individual quick motions. So number one, I don't want to take any action on. Number two, I move that we overturn the constituent board's decision and place the student.
Second.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna vote on that.
One, one, okay. All right, okay.
Okay, so we're voting on number, just number two.
Okay, just item number two. Those of you that are zooming, are you following along?
Why are we not voting on number one? Shouldn't it have an overt vote?
We don't. No. Have to take any action on it.
Okay, Ms. Green, how do you vote?
What do we vote? We voted on student number two on our spreadsheet. Is that right?
So this, this motion is to take student number two overturn and place.
Correct.
That was the motion.
That's the motion.
Ms. Green, how do you?
Can you come back to me? I'm, I'm, I'm trying to follow along. I'm confused.
Okay.
Reverend, do one motion, please, for all of it.
We're doing them in separate motions. Ms. Coates.
Call the question. If you have a question about the motion, but if not, we're gonna vote on the motion, guys.
Okay, just one more question about the motion.
Please.
They didn't allow us to split it up.
Okay, Reverend Collins, is that question on the motion that's on the floor, not the agenda? Yes, sir. Yes. All right. Ms. Green, do you still have a question?
We are, no, because I, I see the motion here in front of me. I just wanted to make sure that I'm, I'm, I'm dealing with the right student. Okay. No, I don't have, I don't have a question.
Okay, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Holland, shed?
Same.
I'm sorry?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Except that on, on the motion, it says we are voting on one and two?
Yes.
No, we're just voting on number two.
Motion number one, no action. Number two, overturn and place student.
Okay.
Number one, no action. Number two, overturn and place student.
Okay.
Okay, let's start over again. Ms. Green?
No.
How do you vote on this?
No.
No. Okay, Mr. Holland, shed?
Abstained again.
Jeffries?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure that the votes are being. Oh, that motion passes. Ms. Darby?
All right, I, that we overturn and place number three.
All right, that's been moved by Ms. Darby, second by Reverend Collins. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Holland, shed?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Next item, Ms. Darby.
Now, I move that we overturn number four and place the student at C.E. Williams North, which is the sixth grade academy.
Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Reverend Collins. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Holland, shed?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Ms. Darby, is that complete your list?
That completes. Thank you.
Okay, item four D.
I move to approve the charter school contracts with the revised language discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Garrett, second by Mr. Frazier. How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I keep forgetting. Ms. Green, how do you vote? Not Ms. Coates.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Holland, shed?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. Item four F.
I move to approve the recommendation of the constituent board to fill the vacant seat on the D nine constituent board.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Reverend Collins.
That was me. That wasn't Reverend Collins.
Well, he said yes in person, but.
Okay.
Mr. Holland, shed?
No, they're still confused our voice, that's all.
Promise you that. Okay, Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Holland, shed?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item four G.
I move to approve the constituent board's recommendation to fill the vacant seat on the District Ten constituent board.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Darby, second by Mr. Frazier. Are there any questions? Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Holland, shed?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Ms. Darby, you want to make a statement about the online public comments?
Yep, so, just so everybody knows who's joining us via the World Wide Web and Internet, in order to provide an opportunity for public comments, the board has provided an email where members of the public may submit in writing their comments. All public comments are, have been provided to board members for review prior to the start of the meeting, and the names of the individuals who have submitted a comment and their comments themselves are posted or will be posted to the website.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Postaway?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The staff and I would like to update you on the school restart plan that we have worked on since we last met. We've been working for several months, and I will just start with the, the recap of the items we're going to discuss today. We're just gonna remind everyone of the short timeline that we've been on as decisions have, have been made responding to the conditions and the metrics, the indicators from the surveys. We'll give an update on the safe restart plan. We'll mention that the, the detail that has been built out and is ready to share with the schools, consistent with the advice we've gotten all along from our health experts who've been working with us. We'll talk about the instructional plans, the COVID-19 metrics that we're suggesting Charleston County use. Don, Mr. Kennedy, will share with us the financial implications, and then we will share with you the two items that would require board action in this portion of the agenda. So recap, we move right in then to the timeline of the major work. So the timeline for us started with a presentation we made to the board in July, and then we, we brought back some information after the July meeting. We had gotten feedback from lots of community members in July. You voted that we could bring students back, but you wanted some additional time. By mid-August, we were hoping to finalize the individual schools enrollment. You saw what happened with that. The numbers who applied were double those who had indicated three weeks earlier that they wanted to. So Ms. Belcher will talk quite a bit about that. Moving on then, we just recap, review the board action that was taken on July 27th. Just four weeks ago, you voted that we would start September 8th with actual in-person instruction, but that you wanted to look at the COVID infection rates for a couple more weeks to make sure you were seeing a downward trend. So in August, two weeks ago, we met, the board approved our, having more than 25% of students served in person across the district based on improved COVID-19 rates, the school facility's safe capacity, and because we were still high in the incidence rates, the availability of staff in Phase One, the startup phase, we agreed that, that teachers should be able to instruct in person only if they wished to do that. And then finally, the preference of parents, sort of in that order. So that's what brought us to this meeting. We're ready to move off now to move into part two to give you more details of the school restart plan and to tell you when the actual document that was in your board materials today will be released to schools and the public. Erica Taylor will talk about that.
Thank you, Dr. Postaway. We just wanted to share with you that you received a document in your board packets that talked, talks about our safe restart plan, and it's in, in much more detail. And so pending any additions or suggestions or action that the board takes today, it's our plan to share that document with schools and then definitely on our website with the public within the next day.
Debra Roy now will review some of the, the school safety guidelines, the implementation plans, and he'll start by talking about the MUSC business playbook.
Good afternoon, board. So much of the information that Erica just brought up with the CCSD restart plan was put into that plan from this MUSC playbook. It hasn't been published yet, and we've been working out the contract document with MUSC. That doesn't mean it hasn't been used, as I mentioned, we used it extensively for that CCSD restart plan. So we're taking the MUSC document, boiling it down to the CCSD restart plan.
Mr. Roy, Mr. Roy, can you, I was trying to give the post away the sign too, to bring it a little closer, being that we have our mask on, it's kind of hard to hear exactly what you're saying. So we just want to make sure everyone is hearing.
Got it. So the MUSC playbook will include two separate documents, one for elementary and one for the secondary or high schools. It'll include a checklist that each of the principals will be able to utilize to see how their school is, is set up for that restart. We've included in the contract, concerted service. So what that means is we will call, we can call MUSC centrally and pay an hourly rate to get their advice, continue to update this document, and schools will have two hours each to get that same phone advice. We'll cover the central questions, the common questions for all schools, and then we'll allow each school to call to talk about their specific school, because there are differences in the way the schools are laid out, and they may have individualized questions for, for MUSC. This, this document has, we've just received it about an hour and a half ago, so we expect that that'll be public, public tomorrow. so we expect that that'll be public tomorrow as soon as we make sure it's exactly what we were looking for. I'm very confident that it is, as we have seen the draft documents. It includes multiple protocols and different options that we have looked at and then selected to include in our C C S D restart plan. Next slide is an operational update. This by no means is inclusive, but hits really the highlights, Plexiglas being the largest. In the end, we will have twenty-four miles of Plexiglas installed if we lay these sheets end to end, four foot high. So it's a pretty extensive effort by both the operations team and contractor support. As of today, we've got twenty-seven schools completed. We hope to have all of high school and middle schools that need them completed by this weekend so that for the leap week next week, they will be in place. High school completion is the following week. Each teacher will get a desk partition. It's portable, it's L-shaped, it's got handles. They'll be able to use it on their desk. They'll be able to take it to conference rooms. They'll be able to take it to small workrooms if they would like. We're hoping to have those in place by the seventh of September. Basic signage in our schools is done. The schools have a menu of things that they can receive from the warehouse related to one-way or related to warefare signage, arrows, dots, et cetera. Again, each school will be personalized to meet their needs, and those items are available for the principals to secure at this point, and a number of them have already got those. We've got our disinfecting foggers in place and operational, the student teacher masks, the student masks as well as the teacher masks. The final shipment of those to start the school year will happen this week. The faculty received state-provided masks last week. They will receive the mask that we procured this week, as well as a number of masks for each of our students. Each teacher will also receive a face shield. Air filtration system upgrades continue. That includes meeting the manufacturer's requirements for the highest filter capability we can put in our schools. That's underway. We've got fifty-five bottle fillers planned for installation. Only nineteen of those are left. Each school will have at least two of those. Larger schools will certainly have more than those. Bottom line in operations, which is not on the slide, is that all schools will have hand sanitizer, all classrooms will have disinfectant, and all schools will have disposable masks as backup. So we're on track to meet that requirement. Next slide, one of the common questions we're getting is what happens if a student or a teacher is positive? I'll just say overarching-wise, we've got a very good system in place that's been in practice since March where our nurses have been working with D H E C to do contract tracing, and I'm very confident that we'll be able to act very quickly and make changes right away. Once we receive information that an individual is positive, a nurse is assigned to do that contact tracing. We expect that to be done within the day. In most cases, we complete it between one and three hours. Those that are close contacts are notified to be quarantined, and we notify facility management on which areas have to be cleaned. We get the fogging equipment out there. We'll notify communications, and then we'll update the dashboard. That update on the dashboard, I'll talk a little about that in an upcoming slide of what information is made available to the public. We then complete the necessary cleaning. The follow-on question from individuals has been what will happen? Will we have to close a school? What will we necessarily to close a school? When does this happen? This is a case-by-case scenario, and we will be working lockstep with the D H E C epidemiology team to determine when something needs to be closed. There is no defining criteria for when it has to happen, but we'll obviously consider the number of positive cases in a school, the distribution of the cases within the school, and the timing of that spread. We're very confident we can make that determination quickly, but the bottom line is we'll determine if a classroom, a wing, or a whole school has to be closed, and it really depends upon the magnitude, and we'll be working with D H E C to determine that on a case-by-case basis. The last slide that I have to talk about is going back to that dashboard I mentioned with information if someone is positive. Along with that dashboard, we'll have links to two items. One is the epidemiology report from M U S C, which has seven metrics. The superintendent will talk about that in a little more detail in a few minutes, as well as the countywide metrics, which we're all familiar with, the incident rate, trend, and positive test data. D H E C has been directed by the governor to provide updates to the public on school positives. We want to stay aligned with that so that our information matches theirs, and so we haven't got the details on what that will look like yet, but we'll make sure that we remain lockstep with D H E C on what information is made public. All right, moving on to face coverings. Natalie?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So Policy A D D is actually on the agenda for consideration today, and what is being requested of the board is to approve a policy that requires for all staff, students, and visitors face masks. It does specify that gaiters, bandanas, and neck scarves are not approved. Added to that list are vented masks. There are some masks that have vents, a little thing that you can twist that allows you to breathe better, and unfortunately, that's not recommended by D H E C, so that has been added to the not approved list. All provisions of the student dress code apply, so there are restrictions with regards to what can be on the mask. No political statements and things of that nature. It doesn't specifically address that in Policy A D D, but we put a statement in there that said that all provisions of the dress code policy applies to that policy. In addition, upon request by several employees, Erica and her team were able to start a Safe Start tip line for any employees that are out at their schools and see anyone not wearing a face mask or adhering to the safety standards that the operations team has put into place. You can call this line or send an email to that email address and remain anonymous, and we will follow up on the tip. Thank you, and I think that Carolyn has the next slide.
I do. Good evening. It's nice to see you all. I'd love to start, if I can, with the next slide, talking about sort of challenges and opportunities. As I think many people in the community already know, we have experienced a setback with our virtual academy and temporary remote. I'd love to talk through that. So when we did the intent-to-enroll form now two weeks, three weeks ago, at that point, six thousand students expressed interest in virtual academy. We also had a large number of students who did not respond at that point. When we went through the proactive enrollment in virtual academy, we had over eleven thousand students express interest, so nearly double the number. Now, one of my regrets is that I didn't emphasize that while we had budgeted a certain amount of teachers and an investment in core courses from through Florida Virtual, Edgenuity, and South Carolina Virtual, we couldn't necessarily hire an entirely new teaching force for the virtual academies. So the assumption was that if we went over our initial projections, which were on the low side, we would, like we do every year, pull teachers from schools based on enrollment. So we had a larger enrollment in virtual academy for one school. We would leverage that teaching force to serve the students. And I made the mistake of not setting that expectation, I think, across the community. So this feels like a surprise, and that is my mistake. Now, I think the good news here is that we're reopening. I think the other challenge that we're sort of balancing is that because we're trying to be cautious around our in-person instruction, we're doing half the size of what a typical class would be with a teacher. So we're trying to use our same teaching force plus the virtual academy staff across smaller class sizes of in-person and temporary remote plus virtual academy. So that's our challenge right now. And the principals and teachers at schools, as well as the level leader sitting behind me, have done incredible work to try to make sure that we're pivoting very quickly, to have all hands on deck to make sure that we can well serve those students out of the gate. I think the big thing that I would want to make sure is that folks understand that our hope here is that we continue to see the positive direction that we've seen from this community so we can bring more students back, particularly because we can show the community that we're able to do this safely, show our teachers that we're able to do it safely. So then our in-person class sizes will get to a more typical level of what we usually have. Just to make sure I'm being clear, if you would switch to the next slide on exactly what we're doing in each context. So for high school, prior even to the finalization of the August fourteenth date, high school principals had asked to do their own virtual programming themselves. It allowed them to better leverage their own teaching force to ensure that they could offer the same number of electives as they typically offered, and it also made sure that they could choose to leverage Edgenuity and South Carolina Virtual, which is the curriculum that we use at the secondary level for virtual academy. So there will be some Edgenuity and SC virtual courses in high schools. The middle schools are going in a similar way. They may use some of the virtual academy curriculum. Again, the asynchronous courses are courses that kids can see the video at any point of instruction, and then it's really the individualized help with the work or submitting their assignments that's done live. We know that we're also seeing some creativity among our principals around leveraging faculty across multiple schools so that if we have a small number of students at a certain grade level that want a science class, we can leverage one science teacher to teach remotely across several schools. And I think one of our bigger challenges is at the elementary level. So all along, as I talked about virtual academy, we had learned from the spring that we wanted to make sure that we had a combination of a more structured day where there was live instruction, similar to how we're communicating right now with the people who are online, and then some time for independent work. Our youngest students, there's only one provider nationally around virtual instruction, and that's Florida Virtual, because it's not typically developmentally appropriate for younger students to do asynchronous, again, without additional support, on their own. So our plan was always to have teacher support in place, which actually ends up being very, very similar to what we're doing for temporary remote. So given that, we did not want to pull teachers or reassign teachers from school sides because we're already trying very hard to make sure our top priority around in-person instruction is front and center. So that's why we've tried to attach virtual academies to individual schools so that often that allows us to have counselors and home teachers working with kids and maintaining a relationship where a large centralized virtual academy would be less effective. I think it's important to call out that we may end up centralizing, if we're able to do this right and go back, and I keep wanting to knock on wood because we're tending in the right direction, to in-person as the majority. We know that there are some families that may never be comfortable with that this year, given that they have medically vulnerable folks in their family, or the students themselves might be. We will make sure that there's always a virtual options for families, but we may end up centralizing the virtual academy at the end of the quarter or the end of the semester. If our numbers are much more reasonable, we're not pulling resources from our schools. So that's sort of the headline. Our next slide, it gives you a sample, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Williams and Ms. Simmons in a moment to kind of talk through because they've been the ones on the front line, talking to principals who have been doing heroic work over the last few weeks. Usually, scheduling is done earlier in the summer, and it's wrapped up by this point. And obviously, in order to do this work, we're having to balance a lot. I think that the headline here is our community is not consistently expressing the same needs. So we have some parts of our community that have a large number of families that want, I would say, a majority of families that want to send their children back in person, and other aspect parts of our community have a majority of families who do not. And about half, a little bit over roughly fifty percent, want some form of remote, whether it was virtual academy or temporary remote, and about half want in-person. So it would be nice if that was a nice even distribution across the system, but that's not the way it is. So we have to adjust in real time at each setting, and we tried to paint a picture of that with this data. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Simmons and Dr. Williams to give you more context.
All right, great evening, everyone. So as Carolyn just alluded to, next, we would like to share with you where we are as it relates to us opening up schools for our C C S D families on September eighth. But before we delve into that, I think we'd be remiss if we did not take an opportunity to thank our school leaders and their teams for all of the hard work that they put into planning and preparing for the start of the school year, which, if we all can agree, will be unlike any other start that we've ever had. So again, our sincerest gratitude to our school leaders. So as a part of the planning and decision-making process to prepare for our safe restart, principals have studied the feedback from staff and parents amongst many other things. So daily schedules, curriculum offerings, as well as the manner in which grade levels will deliver instruction each day are a few of the elements each school has planned for. So as you all are aware, all schools are unique and different. So with that being said, this was made even more evident as we prepared to bring scholars back in three modes, which are temporary remote, in-person, and virtual academy, a virtual academy model. So principals had the opportunity to meet with the district-level support teams to troubleshoot and think of creative ways to address any barriers they faced in an effort to have a design that could be executed on September eighth. So what I would like to do now is share some data from a few schools. If you can go back to that slide that you already went past, apologies. So what I'd like to do now is share some data from a few schools that show the complexities of each school as it relates to addressing the three modes. So as you can see under the student request section, we have one school where zero scholars want virtual academy, where on the other hand, in another school, one hundred and eighty want this experience. Now, under the school plan section, you can see we have the percent that can return for school in the area of capacity and enrollment. Again, you see where a school can bring back ten percent, where another can bring back almost thirty percent based on total enrollment. I like to point out that a big contributor to one of the numbers, the ten percent, is the amount of families that requested in-person for the school. They had a hundred and twenty-three requests in-person, and they are able to serve a hundred and fifteen, and this is what accounts for their ten percent. Again, there are so many different pieces and caveats that need to be considered when reviewing each school's data. Next slide, please. So this evening, two of our school leaders are here to present highlights of their plan with us. Please keep in mind, they are still working on the following things. Number one, they're still trying to confirm that parents understand all of the learning options and what each one has to offer. Number two, think of creative ways to balance out teachers that are teaching remotely versus those that are teaching in-person in an effort to bring back more scholars if possible. And finally, they're still considering or reviewing where they can still receive scholars for in-person instruction. They're reaching out to families to see if this would be an option for them in order to reach that capacity. Like Karen alluded to earlier, there are some schools where we have a small amount of scholars, of parents that have responded, and we want to make sure that we can serve as many scholars as we can in-person safely. So again, we are grateful for our leaders and know that you will be impressed with the work that they have done thus far and that continues to take place in our schools. And with that being said, I'm going to turn it over first to James, Alice from E B Ellington, and he's not here, but he's somewhere virtually, I think. James, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
All righty.
All right, thank you, Dr. Williams. Chairman Mack, Dr. Postaway, members of the school board. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share the safe reopening plan that the Ellington staff and I have worked very, very hard on over the past few weeks. Now, while these are challenging and unprecedented times, I do want to acknowledge the efforts of the staff and their commitment to ensuring that we provide our students with a very robust learning experience. So this evening, I want to talk briefly about what the opening entails at Ellington, starting out with some of our current enrollment numbers, as Dr. Williams shared with you. And as he also shared, our numbers change by the moment. So right now, we're at thirty-three of our families who've indicated virtual academy as their learning preference. Fifty-seven families have indicated in-person as their learning preference, and eighty-nine families have indicated temporary remote as their learning preference for a total of about two hundred and thirty-nine responses. And do be mindful that these numbers do not include our C D and Head Start numbers. We're still working to confirm those numbers. I'd also say that, you know, while we're disappointed in the number of in-person students that we'll serve, we continue to seek some opportunities to bring our students back in the safest way possible. Our instructional design is centered around team teaching. During the week of August tenth, we had opportunities to meet with our entire staff, as well as individual teams to gather input related to our opening on September eighth. And our staff were very engaged in discussion. They were great thought partners and shared creative ways to make certain that the instructional experiences that were designed were purposeful and meaningful. Because of the different learning preferences that our parents selected for the students, teachers reminded that the students on their roster wouldn't necessarily be the students that they would teach on a daily basis. Therefore, we decided collectively that we would implement the team teaching approach this year. That means that teachers at each grade level will work as a team, not as individuals, to provide daily instruction to our students. The team members are responsible for all of the students at their respective grade levels. This also includes our resource teachers, our intervention teachers, and any other teachers who support students throughout our building on any given day. We were really trying to think ahead to that point in the school year where all of our students may be able to return safely for in-person instruction. So by utilizing this approach and having teachers work collaboratively in their support of the students, the transition back to in-person would be seamless for our students as each of them would have access to the same instructional opportunities and the same learning expectations. Daily instruction, but because we recognize and value the importance of social emotional learning, one of our non-negotiables was to make sure that learning, one of our non-negotiables was to make sure that we began our day teaching the Second Step lessons, which is the research-based social emotional program that we use here at Ellington. From there, teachers would teach math and literacy on a daily basis, integrate science and social science in the content areas when appropriate, or teach those subjects in isolation, and integrate writing throughout all of our content areas in the most authentic ways. We've encouraged our teachers to use the station-rotation model, which will help with differentiating and personalizing the learning for our students, and that also eliminates long periods of screen time, which, you know, some of our parents have shared that that is a concern of theirs. Our students will also have opportunities to use the various adaptive digital content, such as Dreambox and iReady for Math, Lexia and iReady for Reading, and some independent reading and workplaces in Bridges Math. As far as the learning platform, we're going to be using Canvas as our access point, and that will direct parents to the LMS and Google site for each of our grade levels. Our grade level, first grade's going to be using Seesaw as their LMS, and they'll also host a Google site that will house resources needed for parents at that grade level. Teachers in grades two through five will be using Google Classroom, and they'll also host a Google site that will house resources needed for support at that grade level. All of our instructional support teachers, interventionists, special education teachers will be added as collaborators to Canvas in the grade-level LMS, so that they too can communicate with our teachers, I mean, and our parents of the students with whom they serve. Related arts teachers also, we're hosting a Google site that houses all related arts classrooms, and that site will be linked through our EB Ellington website. And overall, the school will be using Google Meets for online synchronous instruction. And we're very excited about a new feature this year. The Breakout Room is available through an extension in Google Meet, so we're really excited about that. Just very briefly about Leap Week, we have worked really hard to design a very comprehensive Leap Week, Monday, August 34th through Friday, September 4th. This is an opportunity for our teachers to make that initial in-person contact with students and their parents, to share pertinent information about the upcoming school year, to collect some diagnostic information to get a sense of, you know, what are our students? What are some of their strengths and what are some areas of opportunity for them? So that we can begin day one on September 8th, ready to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students. We've also put together and thought very carefully, thought through some specific protocols that will be implemented, safety protocols that will be implemented throughout our building, starting from the time students disembark the bus in the morning, to transitioning through the hallways, utilizing bathrooms, cafeteria. We've worked really hard to put together protocols aligned with CCSD and DHEC expectations. And then the last piece is parent communication. Our belief is that we need to over-communicate, over-communicate to make sure that our parents are equipped with all of the information that they need to have a successful opening of the school year for their children. So whether it's, you know, the school-wide parent communication tool that we're going to be using, e-learning changes that will be reflected in our student handbook, we have worked diligently to make sure that we have left no stone unturned. So as you can see, we've been working very hard to think through and anticipate everything that we feel will make a successful opening to the school year. We know this is an iterative process, therefore, we will certainly adjust as needed and as dictated by the responses of our students and our families. So that's a high-level overview of what the opening will look like at EB Ellington Elementary School.
Good evening, Reverend Dr. Mack, Mrs. Darby, board members, and Dr. Postaway. Thank you for your support and your commitment to Early College's unique model. As you know, we're already in session, and I could not be more proud of the team at Early College. So we did a couple of things that we think were very impactful that we'd like to share with you. Before school started, we used summer school feedback from students, summer school feedback from teachers, and frequent faculty meetings across the summer to decide on what our instructional model would be in our temporary remote soft start, if you will. Ultimately, we decided that all classes would have 35 to 45 minutes of synchronous class time, followed by 35 to 45 minutes of small group or independent practice time, and ending with a 15-minute synchronous wrap-up for every single class, every single period, and every single day. Social emotional learning is incorporated into all classes daily, at least through the sharing of good news at the beginning of the class period, but also more robust team-building and collegial activities twice per week. We felt that that has gone really well. Our teachers at this point have reported that they're already building very strong relationships with their students, even though they're in a fully online environment, which is remarkable. We were worried about that before the start. Teachers definitely thought, how is this going to work? How am I going to connect with my new students? We had a really big event a couple of weeks ago, about three weeks before the start of the school year. We called it Parking Lot Pickup. We think that that really contributed to the sense of school community. We provided all of our students with an Early College shirt and Early College book bag. We think that we did a great job of supporting parents because we provided all of the school supplies that our children would need for class, which began last Tuesday. The event also involved a device pickup and a textbook pickup, so all of our students had the opportunity to begin working on their devices about two or three weeks before school started, depending upon the grade level. We also provided parents with a cheat sheet that would provide them with information about Canvas, Zoom, and D2L, which is the Trident Tech portal. It also had some information about Clever and any other portals they needed to access. We decided that all of our classes would meet synchronously on Zoom, and we provided all of our parents Zoom links. In fact, you can check out our Early College homepage. One of our teachers has done a phenomenal job of keeping that up. And on the homepage are all those Zoom links for all the class periods for each day. Like Mr. Dallas, weekly communication with families throughout the summer was very important. We thought that there was an emphasis on communication and wanted our families to feel equipped. We tried to make ourselves very accessible to families to talk through individual scenarios, because just like every single school in our district is different, every single family is grappling with their own challenges and questions and considerations. We really worked hard before students got to school to redesign our ROR matrix, which is our PBIS matrix. We talked a lot about the new environment. So for example, our previous ROR matrix might have talked about the cafeteria, but now it became more important to talk about a virtual class setting. We also centered ourselves on our school-wide goals. Early College is a new school. We're still growing and changing, and we wanted to make sure that the pandemic didn't cause us to lose sight of our goals. This is a big year for us. It's the first year that we'll have graduates. And we also wanted stakeholders to be aware of what those goals were and to remain focused on our PDSA. Last week was our first week with students, and I'll tell you what, it was amazing to watch our teachers interact with their students. First day of school, we held pep rallies for every single grade level. One of our seniors even showed up wearing a gorilla costume that nobody expected. It was amazing, and it gave us an opportunity to introduce the ROR matrix, but also another chance, in addition to the opportunities that we had over the summer, to let students know what they could expect of us and what our instructional model would look like. And again, we developed that model with tons of input from students and from parents and from faculty members throughout the summer. We also began working through our MTSS process last week. We have a house team system, which is a structure that we use at Early College to provide targeted support to each student, depending upon those grade levels. We've already had two house team meetings, and we've identified students who might need additional support. So we were really intentional to make sure that that support was not lagging. We were able to do our map testing, so for the rest of the CCSD schools following behind us, we're here to tell you it can be done, and it can be done rather easily. And we are, of course, continuing to focus on social emotional learning. That being said, as proud as we are, we've got a lot of work to do to prepare for September the 8th, when students arrive on our campus. So one of the things that we did was we've been in constant communication with both the Trident Tech Facilities Team and the Operations Team on the CCSD side to make sure that all the cleaning and filters and all that kind of disinfectant procedures were in place and up to CCSD standards. So that was a remarkable feat, and we never would have been able to do it without the help of Mr. Krampson, his team, and Mr. Baroli and his team. We coordinated with TTC so that we can use additional spaces to provide students with virtual learning labs on campus in the event that we do have teachers who are not comfortable coming back to in-person instruction, or students who are not comfortable coming back yet fully. So we're in the process of matching family requests with available space and teachers. We're really proud to say that we had 118 students request face-to-face instruction five days a week, and we think that with the additional TTC spaces, we're going to be able to accommodate all of the students who would like to be in school. We're going to run through individual student schedules and see that each of our rooms meet social distancing requirements and figure out how we need to use those additional Trident spaces. So we still do have that to do, and we're in the process of creating, if you will, a lazy river traffic pattern, so that traffic in our hallways just flows in one direction, and we can try to keep our students distant as they're transitioning in the hallways. We know high school kids are a lot bigger and like to move through the hallway in a couple of different directions, not just straightforward. So we want to be prepared for that, and of course, we're going to share that widely with our families before they return on the 8th. And we're really proud of the work that we've already done and looking forward to seeing our children face-to-face on the 8th.
Good evening, everyone. I have two quick slides, but before which, would like to take a moment to thank principals Dallas and Denny for their presentation tonight. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your service, and thank you for all you do for our boys and girls. The next slide should be queued up. When will parents know? And so I have to, just as Dr. Williams alluded to, the work of our building-level leaders, thank our families and our parents for their patience and their support of the district at large. This has been a long-winding road, but we feel like we are now in a position, at least our school teams are, they're in a position to start notifying families this week. So building-level principals and school teams have labored this summer with every bit of information they can to contend with, grapple with, organize school schedules in a way we can meet the needs of our families. And so, as recent as today, schools have started informing families of their students' learning mode for September 8th, and we expect by the end of the week, all families will have the information they need to begin the school year. And so, parents are being notified as schedules are being completed, but at least by the 28th of this month, which is Friday. I'm going to recap for our families what they can expect out of Leap Week, but I think Mr. Dallas and Ms. Denny gave a really good overview of the types of activities that are being planned for the week. Our 4K through eighth-grade families can expect a face-to-face opportunity to include activities, but not limited to things like meeting their teacher, school tours, an opportunity for our boys and girls to participate, and diagnostic testing, just an orientation and an overview of what's to be expected for the upcoming school year. And so, a lot of effort, a lot of planning and deliberation has gone into organizing Leap Weeks, and by now, families should know their schedule for next week and what to expect from August 31 through September 4. At this time, Mr. Brigman will come to the podium to talk about staffing.
Good evening, everybody. So I am really proud to share with you all that we have hired 510 brand-new teachers to Charleston County School District. The last six months, as you can imagine, as far as recruitment have been unique. So I have to say, after, I believe, 15 years of having recruitment under my area, I was a little bit nervous, but we've done a great job. Our principals, our recruitment staff have really stepped up, and we've hired 510 new teachers, so really excited about that. You'll notice also that in yellow, you'll see that we've also had transfers, and we have internal teachers that transfer each year. We've managed 295 transfers for a total of 808 teachers that have come through the HR process to be placed for 2021. So you can see some of the historical data there, but this was obviously a big year for us and our staff as we worked remotely back in the spring and early summer. So I'm very proud of our team. Some of the opportunities, if you'll go back to that slide, Eric, that we faced this year or challenges we had this year, we had some new facilities opening. One of our biggest was Lucy Beckham High School, as well as the Cooper River Cast and the East Cooper Cast. We also had some schools in transition, so Burns, Garrett Academy, Shakora, Mary Ford, C. Williams, and West Ashley, and our Acceleration Schools. We work with Learning Services to make some changes there. The next slide. So where are we today as far as teacher vacancies? We currently have 21 classroom vacancies. You can see there are seven at our elementary schools, two at middle, nine at our high schools, and three at our alternative schools. We are still recruiting. I will tell you, the pipeline is a little different at this point in time. We do not have as many candidates, but we're also talking about subs coming in and principals covering classes in different ways. As we move towards the conversation around substitute teachers, so we have a plan in place with Kelly Educational Services to provide our schools with a building-level sub, which is really a permanent sub going into the start of the school year, once students are back in our buildings and there's face-to-face instruction. So schools will have permanent subs, which we call building subs. There are 345 substitute teachers in that pipeline who are ready to go back into a building. We need about 220 for that actual plan to work, so we feel really good about where we are with that. And then to end of our 3,400 teachers, I wanted to make sure the board understands that there are about 52 teachers who are out working remotely based on documented health concerns. So this is above and beyond the FFCRA or the Families First Coronavirus Response Act for the month of August and September. If we have a teacher who has concerning and can produce medical documentation, of course, we will allow that teacher to teach remotely from their home. We also have nine teachers that are out based on guidelines from FFCRA. I believe that's mainly for childcare. So I feel really good about all of our numbers across the board. I feel really good about where we are with new teachers going into our classrooms, the transfers, as well as where we are with substitute teachers. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Postaway.
Thank you, and I will wrap up. We have not yet talked about the metrics, so we want to do that now. And I want to start with the slide that DHEC used in a conversation with superintendents on August 18th. DHEC started with this slide. "Our understanding of this new disease and of the situation continues to rapidly evolve. All of the information presented here is based on the most current available information and is subject to change as more becomes available." So that sums up where we've been as a district. I know it's been difficult for everyone as we adjust. Wayne Gretzky said, "You don't, in hockey, skate where the puck is, you skate where you believe the puck is going to be." And we think that's the position this board has taken with respect to how to start schools. We've looked forward, hoping that by September 8th, we'd be in a much better situation than we were in mid-July, and that is, in fact, the case. This slide shows the MUSC COVID-19 Epidemiology Intelligence Report. It also has the link at the bottom, so if anyone wants to look at it, he can. There's, as you see, four indicators are green. The two that are red have to do with the number of infections for 10,000 population and the speed of getting the diagnostic testing results. There's one other indicator that we did not put on this slide because it has to do with the super-spreeder outbreaks, which exist in nursing homes. At this time, it doesn't apply to us, so that doesn't show up on the slide at the time. The SC Accelerated Task Force report has been referenced to you several times. It was published in June, and in that task force report, those who served on the committee asked for DHEC to set some guidelines. So DHEC did set some metrics, which we'll see on the next page. DHEC said they don't want districts to use these metrics in isolation of other factors, and to quote, "It is not meant to be a standalone document." But they asked that we look at, or they suggested that they would look at, two-week incident rates, and they would indicate whether a county is low, medium, or high, the trend in two-week incident rates, rated low, medium, or high, and the percent testing positive. So if you combine that with the SC Accelerated So if you combine that with the SC Accelerated recommendations, if a whole county is rated low in all three of those indicators, their recommendation is that there would be normal operations following DHEC guidelines if there's low spread in the area. And then people miss the last part of these sentences and low to no positive cases within a school building. So that's why DHEC has asked counties not to use these metrics county-wide, but to use them in the context of what parents want and the outbreak that may exist in the community that serves a school. The next page shows today's, it shows the weekly display of data on the DHEC website. This was updated today. We don't have today's update in here because the update occurred just before the board meeting started. But as of August 17th, our incident rate per 100,000 was 291. The trend in incident rate was declining, so we were rated low. And our positivity rate was 16%, which is still high. DHEC reminds us, this is an imperfect science. They're not sure of the testing result, how many people are participating in testing, or how quickly the tests are getting processed. So the circumstances change, and they ask us to use this information, take it seriously, but take other factors into consideration. So the next slide shows the Charleston County metrics. This is what it would look like if we were to code low as green, which DHEC does on their webpage, if you read the whole document. Low is zero to 50 incidents per 100,000. Low in the two-week trend rate is that it's been steadily decreasing for two weeks. And the percent positive, to be in the low category, would be fewer than 5% of the population. The medium is shown in that column. A medium incident rate would be less than 200 per week. As of today, we are in the high rate. So it shows Charleston County, on Saturday, our incident rate was 230 per 100,000. When DHEC released this afternoon's update, we were at 238. So we're 30 to 38 children above the medium spread, which would place our whole county in the yellow range rather than in the red. If you look at the percent positive, we are in the red. Saturday was at 14.2%. Today, with the new chart that's been updated, we're at 13.8%. Compare that to July. That's almost half of where we were in mid-July. We were a little above 25%. So as we look at the metrics, we're trying to find some way now to create parameters for us to move from the Phase 1 opening that you've voted on in July and August to Phases 2 and 3. So as we look at the declining incident rate, this is what I've just mentioned. We're at 238 per 100,000. If you look at the tri-county area on Saturday, Berkeley, Dorchester, and Charleston Counties together, we're 200 per 100,000. So we're decreasing pretty rapidly. The next chart shows that. It shows you how quickly the numbers are declining or have been declining because of the cooperation of our community in following the three Ws: wearing masks, washing hands, and watching distance. Statewide, the COVID testing positivity rate is not coming down as quickly as we would want it to see. Charleston's pattern is not much different from this. The next slide then gets into how we think about setting metrics for Charleston County. You've been asking us to do this for some weeks, and we have given what our understanding of the factors that need to be considered are comfortable recommending to you, a system that is based from the DHEC chart. So if our two-week incident rate is low, anything that's low would get two points. If our trend is low, it would get two points. If our positive rate is low, it would get two points. Anything in the medium range would get one point. And obviously, if we're high, we think that's zero points. So that's the point value that we're thinking about. The next slide, then, we get into the actual guidelines. We think we should look at the two-week rolling data. So every Monday, the data for the past two weeks are updated. We run those numbers ourselves in our district, as well as watching DHEC numbers. They're the same source numbers. So we would update the board every single week. We would give you the information publicly at every meeting. For every gain that we make, if we move from a red to a yellow or a yellow to a green, we get one point. So that when we improve according to the DHEC chart, it would give us another point. Right now, we have two points because we're in the green on the lowered incident rates. So if we look at the next slide, we would tie that to a plan to bring back more children in person. I won't spend a lot of time on that, except to say that we would use the assessment metrics in conjunction with the recommendations that we're receiving from MUSC through the concierge service, the number of parents and students who want to return, and the number of teachers that would be needed in order to serve the students who want to return, as well as the building capacity. Number two, I want to point out that the percentage of the in-person instruction could be adjusted every two weeks, but we would give schools at least a two-week notice before they would need to try to implement. So the next slide spells this out more clearly. Phase 1 is where we are now, two or fewer points. The board sets the guidelines. That's what you did in July and affirmed those in August. Phase 2, when we reach three points, which we should reach if we continue our steady decline. That squiggly line is meant to say about, about 50% of the students district-wide, but as you see, it varies tremendously from school to school. We have some schools where 85% of the students want to come back in person and schools where no parents want their children to come back in person. So it has to be unique to each school's situation, taking into consideration the safe capacity of a school. So that could be, I want to note, in Phase 2, we would ask all of our teachers to be ready to be called back to teach in person if they need to. That all teachers would be subject to coming to help teach the students because we would be in the yellow phase, and that is where both the Accelerate Ed report and DHEC say we can operate at what they call a hybrid schedule, but that could be 50% of the students in and 50% out. If you go every other day, you're being exposed to 100% of the students. We're suggesting something less than that to start with, with around 50%. That could vary, again, that's 50% district-wide, and it could vary by school depending on each school's unique needs and circumstance.
I think that 75 Calhoun might have just lost wifi. I'm texting with somebody in there now.
Okay, because.
It just came, it just came back on for me.
It's not on for me.
I'll keep you posted.
Okay, I don't have it.
Hi, this is Carol Clark. I have lost it as well and I was trying to figure out how best to get to Erica, to let her know, but.
I just messaged the whole group and I texted Erica.
Okay, that's good.
So Ms. Coles, if you can, Ms. Coles, if you can pull your microphone just a little bit closer so it can penetrate.
Just because they're going to ask questions.
Okay, so Jeff, you said in the presentation that the shields would, the teacher shields would be in place by September 7th and then you verbally said you were hoping, is, can we?
They will have them.
Okay, thank you. And will the air filtration systems be done prior to September 8th?
Not every single system will be upgraded. We're working through that. There's a lot, there's a lot of work to be done. So I cannot say that every system will be up to the manufacturer's recommendations.
Okay.
That, that to me again, is a, is a small factor of a number of defensive measures to protect students. In fact, it's not the sole reason to not open a school.
Absolutely. And I 100% agree. I just, we want to make sure we have very clear expectations. I don't need somebody calling us on Wednesday when we were locked, walked out. Now I'm okay with that. When does the dashboard go live?
We don't have a date for the dashboard to go live because we're waiting on the DHEC approach. So I don't have a date of when DHEC will have that. I don't want to put out a dashboard that puts something out that's different that they're going to have as a recommendation from the governor. So I don't have a date. It will be before school starts, before we have the first case of an incident in a school when kids are there.
So the dash, I'm sorry, the dashboard was going to carry a lot more information. If I, again, we're kind of hemmed up that we can't see the stuff. But wasn't the dashboard going to carry a lot of information beyond just DHEC? I mean, I thought it had, I thought it was really a cool concept.
So the dashboard will have links to the DHEC metrics. It will have links to the MUSC epidemiology report and it will essentially provide the information to show where we've had cases and what action's been done.
So it's really just a positive rate.
It's.
Communication mechanism.
It's a communication mechanism and it's also, it is really a way, if I was a parent and I heard a rumor, I heard on Facebook that there was a case at my child's school, I could log, I could click on that and see the school name and what action was taken and know that my child was not in close contact, therefore I was not personally notified to quarantine my child.
So it really is a reporting of incidents mechanism. So it doesn't have to happen today because we're not in school yet. And then I think that we need to get kind of clear before we go into, and maybe it starts with a safe restart, but we've got to get real clear on where we are with this virtual academy because I think for me, there's two things. One, if I pull what was written and handed to us on August 10th, and then what was, I mean, on the proposal for first reading, and then I pull what was handed to us for proposal for second reading, and I have the dates somewhere, I think it's July 20th and August 10th, they're not the same. They're not a lot different, but they're not the same. And then you take that with some of the materials that are being sent to parents. For instance, anything that went out after August 11th only had two options. Didn't say temporary, remote, and virtual, or in person. It said, do you want to be in person or do you want to not be in person? And it could, it can have some of these things. That's not what we were told. It's not what matched the first set of questions that were given to the board in July. So we need to get, and we can talk about that, and I mean, I, we're there, we're here, but we got to get real clear and not change these things after we walk out today in certain aspects, even if it means the rate drops to zero. We don't try to change and add more children between now and September 8th. We've got to get some kind of baseline. And we've got to get very detailed on what this virtual means. I mean, most people are surprised because every one of us knew that if more than 25% of the kids wanted to be in a school, chances are, not all of them were going to get there. No one told us there was a cap on the amount of kids that could access Virtual Academy before we were going to have to change that. And I want to make sure we don't go down that trap again. I mean, there was a triggering point in which. Well, I know, but this is, this is, this is.
You have been going about 15 minutes.
I know. We need to get clear on this.
Okay, so. Yeah.
So tell me why we changed three different times on what Virtual Academy is from June, you know, I mean, that's my thing. If y'all are clear on this, then I'll take this offline and ask them later, but I'm not clear on why everything shifted.
Okay.
And why 12,000 meant we couldn't do virtual the way we planned it and 6,000 did.
I believe Ms. Belcher explained it earlier, but I'll give her another opportunity to explain just what happened with the Virtual Academy as it shifted. And let's keep in mind that every week that goes by, as we begin to put a plan in motion into play, that there are going to be some things that are going to change, is going to shift to get our kids back to the learning curve with inside the classroom, given the metrics that are being used by CDC and by the playbook that are being produced by MUSC and with our staff trying to coordinate the best way to safely do this. And I think some of these things are going to change from time to time. So it may be one way, one week, but it may shift, given the guidelines that, and that the board has approved and have given staff with direction. And how do we move forward, given the CDC guidelines and the other positive rates and per capita type rate? So, so Ms. Belcher, if you could just briefly explain.
I'll even make it easier. Let's not talk about how we got to where we are. What does it look like with remote students and virtual students looking at the same teacher and the same, on the same computer screen? There's some confusion there. There's some fear that, so let's talk about exactly how that blends and exactly how you pull that apart. Because if you've got temporary remote, and the last communication we got was that virtual's a year long. There's no off ramps anymore.
So, so, so Ms. Coles, what question?
I'm trying to ask it, Eric. So let's, so can you explain to us what it looks like that these are two being taught together, and then you're going to start adding more students into the classroom? Some people are saying, well, does that mean the teacher that was on the computer now goes into the classroom with some of the kids and the other kids get a new teacher on the computer? What, what are, what does that look like for them now that it's put together and planned to be pulled apart?
Right. We still want to make sure that we're keeping our commitments to parents. So if families at the end of a quarter, and let's suppose majority of students are back in person, that's what they want, they can transfer into that, or if they're uncomfortable for whatever reason, they want a virtual. So again, at the on ramps, off ramps point of a quarter semester.
They do still exist, exactly as they were. Okay.
Well, those options exist. The clarity you're asking for is the difference between virtual academy and what the instructional program would be for temporary remote.
Well, I'm asking what happens when you have kids who want a temporary remote, put in the same program with kids who want a virtual, and you begin to separate them?
We are continuing to track that because we know that the parent preference for Virtual Academy was a longer period of time. So we feel like letting go of that label would mean that we couldn't find those families that we know at this point in time think they want it for a longer term. However, you're right that in some schools, they will, temporary remote students would be in the same classroom with Virtual Academy students. We also will have at the middle school and high school, temporary remote students and Virtual Academy students may take asynchronous courses through South Carolina Virtual or Edge Annuity. And then the, the one thing I would call out is our plan for elementary had always been, which is different than Florida Virtual on its standalone, more live instruction as well as independent, just given there are younger kids, which is exactly the same plan that we had for temporary remote. The difference is we are not going to use the Florida Virtual curriculum beginning at the beginning of the year at all for K to five. And there's two reasons for that. One, I think our curriculum is stronger. The Florida Virtual curriculum is very good. I'm not being critical of it, but if we have an option of using a consistent curriculum for the entire year, I would use our Bridges or Zern or our ELA curriculum. And I think the second piece of that is, we may leverage it. So this is the place where we've invested. I know there was some confusion about how much money we had invested. We made it on top of our general operating funds, a $1.2 million investment in Virtual Academy that was covered by the CARES Act. Most of that was additional teachers. About 400K was an investment towards purchasing licenses and having some seats reserved. So we may still leverage that beginning, we're going to use all the teachers, but we're going to leverage the 400K maybe at the end of the quarter if our numbers go down to say less than 5,000 students, but that's just not where we are right now. And frankly, from the educator in me, I'd rather use the same curriculum all year for all of our students. We were trying to accommodate difference and make it easier on some of our teachers too.
Okay, Mr. Garrett.
Okay, we've spent $19 million saying that to protect our, our schools. We have not allowed a child in them since March. For the parents out there, we essentially haven't provided anything for the $20,000 that we spend in our tax dollars every year since March. I just, we've also got a capacity level in buildings that we know at nearly all of our facilities, we can accommodate students up to full capacity and most of them, and some of them like academic magnet, it's about 650 of the 750. At what point would we not then say, all right, we got 85% teachers who are willing to teach in person, and we've only got 51%. It just, our mission is to educate them. We've been told that we can safely do so in, in the building with social distancing. At what point do we not, are we not able to just say, we give out county contracts in April, why can that 81% not attend to the 51% who want to show up? That, I know that we had talked about reduced class sizes, but I don't think the board had voted on, I think that was, and I may be wrong on that, don't ever, I don't ever trust my memory beyond the minutes. I think that was, and I may be wrong on that. Don't ever, I, I, I don't ever trust my memory beyond the minutes. But I, I don't see how we would have whole schools where we turn around people and say, you know, you sit at home, we're not able to educate your child, uh, but we can at, at another one, when only half of them want to, half of the parents are wanting to actually be there.
Given the, given the data that we have today, we believe that the metrics that we proposed today will work to do just that. If we, if we understand that when we get into what DHEC would consider yellow, DHEC says you can bring some of the students back and leave some of the students not coming back. Given the choices people are making across our district, it looks as though it's about 50/50. And that's why we're recommending district-wide, when we get into the yellow zone in the metrics we proposed today, that we allow about 50% of the students to come back countywide, and that you, you allow us to make those decisions on a school-by-school basis. Because in some schools, 85% do want to come back.
Right.
In other schools, it's a much smaller number. So based on the data we have today, we think that the vote, the motion, that the, the recommendation for the motion that we've put in the packet would allow that very thing to happen.
So, so that, uh, nobody will come back and say, well, it was 50% countywide, you can't allow 75% at this facility. I'm, I'm just making sure that we're agreeing that it, it, it will be higher in some facilities.
It will absolutely be higher. Some facilities now have enough faculty willing to teach that we could, um, could go to the maximum safe capacity in that facility. But we're in the, we're still in the red zone, according to DHEC. But when we get in the yellow zone, then we're clear, according to, even though we aren't supposed to use one criterion, we have three. We have parents who want to come back. We're in the yellow zone. We can ask our teachers to come back, plus 85% of our teachers already said they're willing to teach.
Yeah, thankfully.
So, I mean, I, I think we have all the ingredients. We just need to be in the safe margin so that we bring more children back into facilities. And, um, if we vote tonight, and if the, the, um, rate per 100,000 goes down, we think we may be able to do that by September 21st. But it is, um, it is too late to make that change now for September 8th.
Right, Reverend Collins, step out. So did somebody else have a question?
If everyone, I want to go last.
Okay, so, Mr. Garrett, Mr. Fraser, did you have a question?
I just, uh, with all due respect to Cindy's concerns, people have got to know.
Yeah.
And so I, I don't, you know, it's imperfect. I, nobody, I've been doing this for a long time, as many of you have. We are faced with a series of choices, none of which we like at all. And we may be able to actually make everybody mad, which is something we routinely do in different ways, but not all at one time. But we've got to nail it down tonight so that people can plan. Families have to plan, employers have to plan, and we got to pick something to go. So, I hear you. But school starts in two weeks.
That's my point. Um.
All right, well, hold on. So, so, um, so you're, you're done? Yes? Okay. So, Ms. Jeffrey, Ms. Green, and Mr. Hollenshed were off of the call for just a minute, so we're, we're asking questions now, the superintendent's report. So, Mr. Hollenshed, do you have any questions?
Yes, um, for Dr. Postwood, to make sure I kind of got mixed around, how many vacancies do we have?
Mr. Bergman.
Yes, sir. We have 21 true classroom teacher vacancies.
Okay. Have we been using any other outside sources to help fill vacancies? Now, or we've just been doing it with staff?
Um, we've continued to use our in-house recruiters, working with our principals. We have substitute teachers through Kelly Services to cover any vacancies.
Thank you. And then the other thing, going back to what Cindy was saying, I think we, we just got back online. Um, I think Mr. Fraser is right. No matter what we do, parents have to make a very, um, sound decision. And I think to speculate right now what's going to happen by, I believe, September 21st, um, as you know, the trend either goes up, or goes down, or goes into the middle. So we're just going to have to wait to see what happens. The only thing we can do is to prepare to, uh, meet the expectations of what's happening right now. So again, um, I just commend staff on what they have done so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Green, you have a question?
Yes, I do. I think I had several, but I think they got lost when I got lost. Um, but one question, and I, I, I think I read this somewhere, but if, if someone could explain to me how you're making the decisions of what kids, what families are, um, allowed to, uh, be in person? You got, just for example, 50 parents at one school, you can only accept 10. How are you making that decision? Is it random?
Ms. Belcher?
Yes, it's a combination of considering objective criteria around a student need and a lottery. So roughly, we're trying to aim for about 25% of, or I'm sorry, about half, half and half. So half from a lottery, it's random, and half from, uh, objective criteria. There are some schools that are considering, uh, curricular decisions that might also affect that.
Can you expand on that a little bit? When you say curriculum decision, what does that look like? And what does objective criteria look like?
Uh, Dr. Postwood says sometimes I have too much in my head, and I, I, I say things that are not as clear as I want them to be, but by, uh, curricular decisions, it's, for example, SOA, the seniors do performances, so it's important that they get into the school earlier to begin to work on that. So they're prioritizing the seniors. That's not typically what all schools are going to be doing, as a for instance. And then on the objective criteria, we're trying to be very sensitive, ma'am, to not call out uh, individual personal conditions for kids, because we want to be protective of that. There were already, I think, some rumors that we were only taking special needs kids, and that's not true. We're trying to make sure that we're considering the kids that are most need in-person instruction, and we're doing that based on a variety of different criteria.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Green, you have another question?
No. Thank you.
Uh huh. Ms. Jeffries. Okay.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment.
Okay.
And I, I, as you all know, I'm always researching all over the, you know, and I've been researching how this is being handled throughout the country, and I have to commend the team in Charleston because you're more on top of it. It's an imperfect thing that you're trying to do than many of the other school districts that I've been reading about and hearing about from parents. So I would just like to offer that. I don't think anyone has the perfect answer to this. So I commend you for what you've done.
Okay. Thank you, Reverend Collins.
Thank you. And I'll be quick as possible, sir.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I'll be as brief as possible.
Okay, Reverend Collins, I'm going to hold you to that.
Yes, sir. So, my, one of my confusions is this. If 85% of the teachers signed up for in-person instruction, and you have about, uh, 16,000 students that want in-person instruction, and maybe, let's say, go up to 20,000, uh, before it's all over. I don't understand how you have, uh, 21 teacher vacancies, because there's more teachers that signed up for in-person instruction than remote, that are willing to come to school. So to me, that seems like if you've got 16,000 students, which is less than half our population, it's like you would have more than, uh, enough teachers that you can use in person. It's like you have, it seems like you have a great surplus. But just thinking that for a minute before you answer it. Now I'm going to ask the other three questions. I'm going to ask them all at one time, I think. Teacher safety protocols, which I've got calls about this. Will there be, will there be any wash stations in the classrooms? Will there be any sanitizer stations in the classrooms? All right, that's one. Two, uh, you can write it down if you want to. Are students allowed, will students be allowed to approach or contact a teacher in the classroom? Will students change classes? Or will the students remain in that classroom, and a teacher, a different teacher come in for different subjects? And, and lastly, elaborate on the, the, the classroom disinfection. You said there'd be disinfectants in the classroom. Can you explain what that means, uh, if you can, what that really means?
I'll start with the first question about, um, the limitation, the difference between the numbers of students who want in-person and the number of teachers willing to teach in person. On July 27th, I believe, this board voted to allow approximately 20 to 25% of students to return in person, and indicated that you wanted to watch for 10 more days to make sure that the incident rate declined before you cemented that decision. So schools started planning then, assuming that they were going to have about 25% of, 20 to 25% of the students back in person. We, in the meantime, surveyed students and parents to see what their interests were, and this is because I think it's that survey you were referring to a bit ago. We were wanting to know, do you want to come in person, or do you want to be served online? So, according to that survey, we knew we could probably serve more students in person. So, um, the board at, on August 10th said, we, district-wide could have more than 25% of the students, um, if, if we wished to do that and could provide the condition safely. The teachers on the survey indicated that they were willing to come back and teach in person if we had smaller class sizes. So it was the limitation of providing smaller class sizes for the teachers who were willing to come back until we get the protocols that we have in place tested to make sure that they work. That created the need to serve more students then, virtually, at least temporarily. So it was a combination of the, um, of the limitations that the board put around starting back safely with the survey to teachers, asking them if they were, were willing to teach students, because we weren't yet in the, the DHEC yellow zone, that we were high in all three indicators that DHEC used. And at the time, we were high in several of the significant indicators that MUSC used. So that was the combination of factors that brought us to the scheduling challenges that we've experienced, along with the response of parents, as we got right down to it, not wanting as many of their students to come back in person as had indicated initially in our survey. So that's what brought us to this point. We think we have a, a good plan to open, start really small, make sure our protocols work. But that's why we need to vote on the metrics to allow us to open up to more students if we're able to run safely from August, excuse me, from September 8th, um, through the, the, uh, the 21st, knowing that we're going to have many students in school next week for their one-on-one visits with teachers during the, the K, 4K through 8. With respect to the sanitizing in the classrooms, Mr. Burley can answer that. I will tell you whether students move from class to class, or the teacher comes into the class, depends a lot on the age of the students. At elementary school, it's very easy to leave a whole class together and have adults move in. By high school, that's very difficult, because rarely do you have one group of students who are in the same math, the same, um, electives, the same science and social studies, and so it becomes much more difficult. So the, the higher, the older the children get, the chances are greater that they will be moving about the building, and that's why we talk about that lazy river. They only circulate in one direction. And you heard both principals talking about each of those, um, things.
Will someone escort the children when they move from class to class, or they'll be free to go out?
Depends on the age of the children, but if it's.
It'll be a high school.
If it's high school, there, there have to be people in the hallways. I'm not, I don't know that they will escort every child, but there have to be people in the hallways.
From a disinfecting perspective, Reverend Collins, uh, every school will have a nightly disinfecting of all horizontal surfaces, all bathrooms, and all common touch surfaces on the playground. In addition to that, 20% of the building will be fogged at night. We'll have a fogger for every, every school. They'll do 20% of that school each night. So once a week, the school will be fogged. During the daytime, all bathrooms, including classroom, classroom bathrooms and touch surfaces in the common spaces, will be disinfected. Each classroom will have a spray disinfectant bottle. Uh, the teacher can use that at will. We have the safety data sheets. Uh, it doesn't require any PP for them to wear that. If a teacher's not comfortable with, or wants to do more, they're welcome to do more, and we will have uh, the disinfectant in the school to refill those bottles. Hand sanitizer is the, is the other, the other question. We have hand sanitizer delivered to all of the schools in one gallon pump bottles. The school teachers can use whatever bottles they have. The principals have gotten them. A lot of them have their own. They're able to refill those from the day porter or from the principal, depending on how they want to manage that. Those bottles will be replaced on an, on an as-needed basis. So there is no, and then we have got wall-mounted, uh, hand sanitizer in common spaces. We didn't put a hand sanitizer dispenser in every classroom. We didn't put a gallon pump bottle in every classroom, because there's actually a limit, because it is a flammable, on how much can be actively used in a school. And in some schools, if we put one in every room, we would be violating that fire marshal requirement. So we've kept the small bottles in the classroom, gallon pump bottles for, for refill, wall-mounted san, hand sanitizer in common locations.
Can I just make a clarification with, I just don't want the board to be forced into a, uh, their handcuff, feeling handcuffed with respect to a survey that was done a month ago. I've, um, I mean, we budgeted in, in the fall, and I know you know this, but I mean, we budgeted in the fall based on uh, a certain class size across the district, and a, a sur, survey monkey that we send out, yeah, I, I assume that survey monkey was the, however the survey was, who, whatever format you use, they, does not create board policy. And I, I know that all y'all know that, but I don't want to think that somehow the, the board is tied into, um, a new class size and a new budget based on, because it's, it's just outside of, of reality for what we're going to have the dollars to do, but.
Yes, sir.
But you've answered all but the one question.
Reverend Collins, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Okay.
If you can just pause for a minute.
All right.
Uh, allow everyone the opportunity to regroup, and we're going to start back at, at 6:51. Okay?
6:15?
6:51.
Oh.
We're taking quick. To the bathroom.
Okay.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't, I mean, just.
Yeah. Texting my dog, sitter, like, I'm coming.
Yeah. We lost four.
We lost four.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
Yeah.
Texting my dog, sitter, like, I'm coming.
We lost four.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
Yeah.
Texting my dog, sitter, like, I'm coming.
We lost four.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
I'm just saying, like, a survey doesn't get too expensive.
A session, I believe Reverend Collins, you had one question left?
Yeah, just tell me about the classroom. What protects the, what separates the teachers from the students? And do the students have access to go make contact with the teacher or can they contact the students? What is the classroom structure that provides safety, other than the barriers between the students?
So, you know, obviously, that varies from pre-K to 12th graders. It's hard to keep a pre-K kid from wanting to walk up and hug their teacher. So, we obviously expect that there'll be more interaction, closer interaction with the younger kids. But for those that can understand social distancing, the expectation is that throughout the day, they're going to maintain six-foot distancing. Now, there's going to be times when they have to get closer. That's why we're providing the teacher L-shaped dividers, that they can sit face-to-face with a student at their desk and be much closer than that. The teacher will be walking within that six-foot span on occasion, but the goal is to maintain six-foot distancing wherever possible. And at this point, we'll be wearing masks through the day.
Okay, Ms. Coates.
So, at our last meeting, we were told, and Jeff, you gave a great presentation, that there would be the ability to have more than 25% of the projected enrollment in the school. There had to be other factors. How many schools are bringing in more than 25% of their projected enrollment into the school on September 8th?
I don't know if we know that today. The principals are still working on it. Carolyn, you all worked over the weekend.
That's right. Dr. Williams and Ms. Simms stepped out. I can check for you though, Ms. Coates, on what we've got so far, but we don't have the complete data yet because the principals are working on it right now.
You don't think any of them?
Oh, no, it's more, I just don't know the number. There are schools who are bringing back more than 25% of their enrollment. Yes, ma'am.
I think the most valuable slide y'all gave us was slide number 18 in this presentation, and I would love that we could get that for all the schools, just so we all know what everyone knows at the same time. And Ms. Belcher, you said that we may centralize Virtual Academy for middle school and elementary students and some students at the end of the quarter or the semester under some circumstances. Is there any way that we can get more clarity on that? If not tonight, certainly before we get halfway through the semester, because that's a very, that's a very broad statement that can make everybody think the wrong thing.
Yes, ma'am. I could certainly come back with more of a plan. I think the key challenge is, like, we could have kept moving forward and served the, I think it ended up being closer to 10,000 students who want a Virtual Academy in a Virtual Academy. The challenge about that is that would have been our largest school by a factor of 2.5, right, as compared to Wando, and it would have meant decimating school communities by pulling or reassigning teachers to teach in that model. And we knew, or at least were assuming, that most families actually want to send their children back to school at some point in person, but they were afraid that if they didn't express an interest in Virtual Academy, they'd lose that option. So, we feel like if we can show we can do this right, we're going to have many fewer families that want that. And it really is about the numbers. We just want to make sure that our school communities are able to move forward, focus on in-person instruction, and do a good job, and well-served families virtually. And we were, and again, that's on me for not setting an expectation that we would have had to reassign teachers anyway, because we can't add just another whole teaching force on our budget. But I think our goal here is to make sure that if it's a smaller number, we can reconsolidate and make sure that we're serving them separately. We don't have to do that necessarily, but I'll make sure we come back to the board with more information.
I mean, what I would see a parent asking, does that mean my kid's going to have to change their teacher? Or those kinds of things?
I do think we want to make sure that parents know across the board, frankly, that the teacher may change, because as some teachers are not comfortable right now with in-person instruction, they may be assigned to remote, they may get more comfortable, and so we may have to move students around over the course of the year. Unfortunately, I think this is one of those years where we're going to all have to be a little bit flexible. Part of the motivation on connecting the Virtual Academy to local schools is that we know the most important thing is relationship. So, the more that we can keep it a smaller community, like Mr. Dallas, who knows his families, he is more likely to do the retail politics of showing what's possible than I am, right? So, that's part of this, is what's the right fit for that community.
And the other thing, excuse me, that just, it's obvious to us, but maybe we should state it, is if you have 10,000 students who initially want some sort of online instruction and you pull teachers out of schools, we believe other parents are going to want to send their children back to school, but if you've already tied up those teachers in virtual instruction with other kids from other schools, then you don't, you don't have the flexibility to bring them back. And that's what Mr. Dallas was talking about, having the whole team of teachers work with all of the students, because we are going to have to regroup frequently this year. There will be three or four times, I would anticipate, throughout the year that we're going to have to regroup, and we want to be very upfront about that.
Good, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Darby?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the metrics related to school reopening and revise school calendar proposal to permit early dismissals in the first two days of school for the purpose of school meeting to improve operation.
Second.
That is item number 6A, and since I haven't asked any questions, I'd like to say something to support my motion.
Wait a minute.
I think one thing that we all are really struggling with is that things are changing, you know, every day, multiple times a day. And I feel like, I've received emails that I'll get about this, I feel like as a district, as a board, as a staff, we've worked really hard to respond to what parents are saying they want. And if you look at our comments that we get, those things are on the big spectrum. Some people want us all virtual, some people, Mr. Garrett, want everybody back in school. So, we cannot make all those people happy. And in the beginning of the summer, we started talking about the Virtual Academy, and then lots of parents said, well, we want Virtual Academy, but we want it to be based out of our kids' school. And you guys said, we're going to figure out a way to do that. So, I understand that things have changed and things are going to continue to change, and we're going to push back at you guys and you're going to push back at us, but we're in a crisis mode, we've got to get our kids back in school learning as soon as possible. So, that's why I made that motion.
Call a question?
But I do think, I'm sorry, Todd, but it would not be fair if we did that. If we vote yes to this, are we voting to the three pages that are labeled in our board docs? And somebody's already, Julie, I'm going to take that, Julie, I need you to take that off of there. But we've got a presentation, which what we've seen is final safe restart, August 24th board update.
That we're, they're voting for the metrics, the metrics related to school opening?
But just to be clear.
Well, I made the motion, so I'm telling you what the motion means, to be clear. It's the CCSD metrics related to in-person instruction, where it shows the low, medium, and high, and green, yellow, and red, and that piece that we talked about, the metrics. And then that we are going to have two early dismissal days, the first two days of school, so that school staff can evaluate how things went, which I think is a fantastic idea. So, that's what, just the metrics.
So, we're not going to review the draft proposal document that's in here for the metrics. We're just going to vote on, so these three pages?
So...
Can I publish them tomorrow? And they're going to match exactly what you're going to do when you ramp up student population?
I would want to make sure that there are no incongruencies. For example, tonight, we were very clear that we're talking about 50% district-wide. Some school might have 85% of its students in person when it's safe to do that, if they have this capacity, the seating capacity for that. Others may have a very low percentage or no. I would want to make sure that the writing in the three-page document is absolutely clear on that point. Other than that, I don't think there's any incongruency.
So, you think that if we vote on this tonight, I can take this document tomorrow, publish it anywhere I want to, and with the exception of one sentence that you will tailor it to schools, this is exactly what you're going to do?
I, the PowerPoint slides were cut and pasted from that document.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor that has been moved by Ms. Darby and second by Mr. Garrett. Is there any questions in relation to the motion that has been made? Hearing none, those that are in person, we ask that you please cast your vote. Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Should I vote electronically?
Okay, all right. What about Mr. Holland? Okay, Mr. Holland, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Cast your vote. Item 7A.
I move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved by Mr. Garrett, second by Mr. Frazier. We ask that you please cast your vote. Mr. Holland, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Ms. Green, are you voting electronically? Does she vote? Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Yes.
You. Reverend Collins?
I do have a question on the motion, Ms. Burrow. Do you have half the money, roughly half the money would go back to District 20? For the heating and purposes? And a little more than half go to the bus lot?
Right, it's 1.8 million would remain for District 22.1 million to the bus lot. We would come back to the board to determine where that 1.8 would go. We would still seek board approval. Right now, it's being applied to Stony Field, but we have the funds for Stony Field.
So, it's going to completely prepare the bus lot or just buy it all?
This would buy the land if we need it, and we haven't closed on a contract yet, so the money might not be used, but it's there available for us to consider a contract. The construction of the D3 bus lot is from the Phase 3 sales tax program, and those funds are still there. So, this is a land purchase that would follow with a construction project from Phase 3.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, Reverend Collins, can you cast your vote, please?
I did.
You did? Okay. All right, Julie, has everyone voted? Okay, yeah, I will. Julie, has everyone voted? Okay, Ms. Coates?
So, are we not, as a board, going to review the Safe Restart Plan together? Or ask any questions about it?
Yes, ma'am. Do you have questions?
Well, I mean, I'm asking the board's will. It's a document that has like, you know, some things in there that don't tell us what's going to be happening.
Are you referencing the document that had, that was not, that was attached to the superintendent's report?
Yes.
And that document that was, which document specifically you're referencing to?
CCSD Safe Restart Plan 82120.
I think if everybody, if the majority wanted to review that more, they would say, but I think...
Yeah, but let me just...
If they don't, that's, I'm just asking, if the board doesn't want to review...
Hold on, guys, hold on, hold on, hold on, let me get to what you're referencing. The document that stated the final safe restart, is that the one?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the one you're referencing? Okay, that's the one that, that's part of the superintendent's report, so that part...
Hold on just a second. There are so many attachments that kind of almost say the same thing. This one says this.
Safe Restart Plan 821?
I don't know, I don't know what it's labeled as in there. I know that when you print it, this is what it says.
Okay, Dr. Postaway, that's a part of your presentation?
Yes, sir. It's to share with the board the more detailed directions that we've been giving to schools that mirror what's in the MUSSC playbook, since we weren't able to publish the playbook that is the guide that, it's adjustable. We keep adjusting it as we receive different guidance from DHEC or from NUSSC. And so, we didn't bring it to the board for approval. It's for your information, and it's a living document. We continue to update it and keep a date on the front.
Okay, all right. So, Ms. Coates raised a question about this document that was not fully presented in its detail. What's the pleasure of the board?
We already passed that on the agenda.
Yes, Reverend Mac, you've already passed that on the agenda.
We have, I understand that, and I understand that we are in a part of the situation as well, too, that we don't want to, in any kind of way, shape, form, or fashion, have the public to feel that we, the board, has not been informed, or there's anything that has been included in the document that we're not aware of, and we're approving items as we move forward. So, I just have the concern that a board member raised that question, and I don't want it to go unrecognized that we, the board, just did not want to review that information that the superintendent has readily prepared.
Is it for action or was it just for information?
This was a part for information, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
It was for information?
Well, the board, I mean, you know, that was for information, no action was necessary for that. Well, there are questions that individual can follow up with the superintendent.
Okay, all right. Item 7B.
Move to approve the tax anticipation note.
Second.
Properly moving, second. Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Any questions?
I vote yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Thank you.
Reverend Mac, the balance of item 7 are information items only.
I was getting ready to say CD and E are information only, so are you proposing that we go straight to 8A?
Yes, Mr. Garrett had to leave, so I was covering for him.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Mr. Garrett had to leave, so I was covering for him. Those items are information only, so I'd suggest we move to item 8.
I move to suspend the two reading requirement of policy BG, BGD, and approve the passing of the new policy ADD, face covering policy effective immediately after only one reading.
Second.
Properly moving, second. Are there any questions?
I just have a question for Natalie, if the wording of the motion is what we needed to say. Is Natalie there?
Yes, so, the update that was submitted, for clarification, Ms. Ham, do you want me to read this?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, because I think there was some specific language that we needed to make sure that the motion had.
Yes.
And, okay, I've got it, but if you've got it there, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so, item 8A, just before, the motion is to suspend the two readings requirement of policy BG, BGD, for purposes of considering policy ADD, which if approved, will go into effect immediately after only one reading. Is that what you have, Ms. Green?
Yes, and policy ADD is coming up next. It has to do with the face shields, face masking.
Correct.
I...
I wanted to make sure that you all suspended the policy first and then took action on the policy, which was the cleanup. So if Ms. Darby will accept the amendment to that motion, I think that you guys can vote on it.
Ms. Darby?
Yeah, so what's?
The issue was you suggested approving the policy in the same motion, so we need to only approve the recommended.
Correct.
Approving the pass, policy of, pick out approving the passing of the new policy ADD.
So do I need to read it again, just for clarification?
Yes, yes.
Motion to suspend the two reading requirement of policy BG, BGD, for purposes of considering policy ADD, which if approved, will go into effect immediately after only one reading.
That's right. Somebody seconded.
Okay, all right.
Already voted.
Yep, I seconded.
All right. Has everyone cast their vote?
I didn't, I didn't cast mine yet, just because the wording is the old, old language, so I guess I can vote, and Julie will, would have made the change, right?
Yes, we need to make the change on the, the public motion is not consistent with what you read.
Correct.
So how do you, how do you vote, Ms. Green?
Yes.
It has.
Reverend Mac, I'm going.
I'm sorry, say again?
I'm leaving, but I vote yes.
Okay, you said you're leaving?
Yes, sir, I voted yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Good, thank you. All right, next item up, item 8B.
Move to adopt the ADD face covering.
Second.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Mr. Frazier, and there's a question coming from Ms. Coates.
So the final sentence says, in as part of this policy, the board authorizes the superintendent or his or her designate to amend these requirements as necessary to meet health and safety guidelines. The way I read that, Natalie, is that the policy can be changed without coming to the board.
It's under the board approval.
I think that's correct, and I believe that it's in there because we could get a notification today from DHEC that a certain kind of face mask isn't sufficient, and we need to, we may need to change that out more quickly. The ones we provide will be fine, but students may be, or employees may be wearing their own, and we might need to do something in emergency. I can promise you, we wouldn't do anything long-term without bringing the revision back to the board.
That actually happened between the first time we came before you and now.
And I believe that, and I trust the administration, but I want to make sure that we understand so that we don't get told later, we won't be very clear about what it means, and that's exactly what it means, and I'm still going to vote yes for it. I just wanted to make sure we know that's exactly what this means. It's going to get changed, and we might not be told about it until a Friday update, and these are unique circumstances. I'm okay with that, but I want to make sure that we're clear on the expectation.
Okay, is there any other further questions?
Did you clean the policy up from last time? Did it include the map?
Yes, sir, so if you look at the, I can just quickly go through what the changes are from the last time you saw this. We added a sentence that indicated that neck scars, bandanas, gaiters, and masks with exhalation valves or vents are not acceptable face coverings and shall not be used. Face shields are not to be worn without an appropriate face covering unless you are specifically authorized. Exceptions for wearing masks for both, for face coverings for both faculty and students include all the things that we previously listed and planned and socially-distanced mask breaks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Also, visitors will be denied entry or asked to leave district property if they refuse to wear face covering. And also, the provisions of all of the applicable dress code policies apply to the face coverings. I do just want to make specific mention that I've done quite a bit of research with a lot of the major religions. There's a thing going around the country where people are trying to use religion as the scapegoat for not being able to wear face masks. Through my research, I really could not find a religion or major religion that, that has such restriction, but I want to make sure that I point out to the board members that there's a process that a religious exception would go through, which includes an approval. So you don't automatically get it if you are claiming a religious exception. There's a process by which we could actually ask for documentation from your religious leader.
Okay, is there any further questions? Hearing none, Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Holland, Chad has left, and Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Okay, has everyone else cast their vote? Good, thank you. Okay, that item passes. Item 8C.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Frazier, second by Ms. Coates. Are there any questions?
Yes, Natalie, I couldn't find any research where these changes were for K-12. I thought they referenced higher ed, so I was wondering why you put it in a K-12 policy.
So that is actually the change, literally, that's the change.
That is the thing, okay, thank you.
Right, these requirements used to be specific to higher education or secondary colleges and universities, and now they actually apply to K-12.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any further questions? Ms. Green, how do you vote?
Already voted yes.
Okay. Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Thank you.
Reverend Mac, move to approve 8D.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Frazier, second by Ms. Coates. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Ms. Jeffries, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Thank you. Board members, we have come to a point in our meeting tonight where one of our serving board members, board member has, has now moved to a different state and will be leaving us officially on September the 4th. Ms. Jeffries, it has been an honor and a privilege to have worked with you these past three years and 10 months. Truly, you have been a trailblazer for change, for equity across the board, for every student in CCSD. There is without question, whether or not you have voiced your concern, rolled up your sleeve, and have really did the hard work that we did here or currently doing right now in CCSD. Thank you for your talent, your resources. As an educator, you know the importance of a good quality education, and you have engaged in those conversations. You have led our SEC department with curriculum, with accessibility for students, and you have really voiced those strong concerns of what we need to do to move forward, to make sure that we're reaching every child, every student within the district. On behalf of this board, I just want to say thank you for your time and for your service. Truly, you will be missed in CCSD, and, but I know that moving to a new chapter in your life, into a different state, it will truly be a loss for CCSD, but I can imagine the gain for your family and this new adventure to where you are now, and we just thank you so much. We're so glad that you did receive the flowers that the board sent. They wanted to make sure.
They're right there.
That you received them on the, on the night of this meeting, and, and we will be sending you a plaque in the mail that will be delivered to you as a, as a reminder of your service that you have rendered to this district, to this board. And I believe that I speak for staff and I speak for this board, that we truly thank you for what you have done. And I say to you, as I would say personally to an individual, I bid Godspeed upon you, blessings upon you, in that, and the air where you are now, that you will continue to fight for justice and quality education for all of our students everywhere. And I know you will continue to do that as an educator that you are. It's in your blood, it's in your screen to do just that, and I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. I will miss all of you. I know we've been through struggles and successes together, and thank you all. I will miss you all.
Thank you. And you know, you are still on task until September 4th.
Yes, I am. I'm here.
Tonight, but I am sure that we will have some special meeting before then, because as this, as we begin to prepare and plan for the beginning of schools, things will happen, and we will need to make swift decisions, and we will still need your input as we move forward.
And Reverend Mac, I'd like to add that, because I'm the forever educator, if anyone in the district or the board ever needs me as a sounding board, I'm, I'm still really care about what happens to our students and our teachers in Charleston County, even though I'm not there. So please use me if, if I'm, if you can.
So you'll be proud to know, I'll tell you this now, you'd be proud to know that we, we did have a parade outside in the front. There were Cajun folks championing for the cause, so you'll be proud to know that they were out there moving forward. But we will continue to move forward and make sure that, making sure that we have safe practices in place for our students, for our teachers, for our staff, for our cafeteria workers, our janitors, everyone that, that will touch, our bus drivers and so forth on the line. So we are continuing to move forward and to make those things happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Board members, you will see that our next scheduled regular board meeting is September the 14th, but I will put you on notice to let you know that there's a possibility that we may have a special call meeting between now and then, just to let you know, just in the event that we need to make some upcoming changes. If, Haring, having said that, entertaining motion for adjournment.
So move.
Hi, everyone.